Agents.
I'd like to welcome everyone. Jenny, if you could take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Mayor Furlong.
Here. Coram is present. This time motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We have no presentations. And we have the consent agenda, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Stark.
Thank you, Mayor Furlong and City Council members. For the audience here or watching at home, the consent agenda contains several separate items which were acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent agenda has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will have also been approved, and no further action is necessary. Any City Council member may request an item be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for further discussion. Tonight, we have nine items on the consent agenda. Item A is the May 3, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Item B is general claims of the city. Item C is acceptance of the 2021 financial report with the city's audit firm of, and you'll have to forgive me if I mispronounce some of these, Malloy, Montague, Karnowski, Retosevich, and Company, or I should have just said MMKR. Item D is a charitable gambling permit for North Metro Flex Academy located at 2350 Helen Street North. Item E is an approval of an on-sale and Sunday liquor license for NSP Hospitality, doing business as Max Steiner. And this is something that was a minor revision from a liquor license that was approved two weeks ago. Item F is a resolution approving acceptance of donations received in April 2022. Item G is the building permit report for April 2022. Item H is the approval of a new Arts and Culture Commission members. Item I is the lease and premises agreement with Hill Murray's Fathers Club, and that concludes the consent agenda.
At this time, any Councilmember would like to pull an item at this time they can? If not, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda is approved. This time, the meeting is open to the public. We have three people. Sean. Welcome, Sean.
Sean Rivet, 2483. I can't even remember my address right off the top of my head. Whatever, y'all know where I live. I'm in the water hole. Your pond didn't help my street one bit. My neighbor almost lost his car. I almost lost my truck again. Out in my, up above my waist again, out in the street. I don't know what else to do. I can't, I have a guy coming to help, help me with my yard. The yard ain't gonna help nothing. It comes from your street. There's no way I can, the only thing I can do is put, raise my house up six feet or something at the rate it's going. I can't keep dealing with this. And, you know, you had the opportunity to help out my street, and you guys denied me or said, no. I understand that you don't want to start setting precedences. Please set a precedence to help your residents and help fix my street then, so I can sleep easy. I haven't slept since Thursday night. I had to call in sick on Monday because I was sick. I didn't get to go to work. Because I'm getting so sick from these rains and these storms and stuff. And you guys, I can't do nothing to your street. You want me to, I'll bring a Bobcat in and I'll fix it, you know, myself, but I'm pretty sure I'll get in trouble. So, you guys, I'm asking you for help. Once again, I'm back here asking for help. This has been 12 years, going on 12 years now. Still haven't seen it. I'd like to see her, your Councilmember Wong's data that she gave me as her no. Or Councilmember Cole for his no. What, I still don't understand your guys' reasoning. I haven't even watched this Councilmember, I didn't even watch that meeting that I was supposed to watch. I was so mad and so upset. But the two people that actually voted yes for me has been to my house and actually walked around with me and actually spent some time with me. Neither one of you have offered everybody to come over at any point in time and walk around with me, see what I'm going through. Maybe you guys would have had a little bit of better information instead of just going off from your data or whatever. That's obviously wrong because it's still happening. I'm sorry, man. I just, something needs to be done down there. Nothing.
We can, we'll talk to City Manager, but right now, yes, we voted, you know, not to have the DNR take over that property.
Yeah.
We have had significant rainfalls again.
Again, I understand.
We're talking a major, a major rainfall. I got pictures of other neighborhoods very similar to yours.
Mm-hmm. Mine's reoccurring, though. It doesn't even need to storm like that. Doesn't have to storm like that. If it's just a prolonged rain, it just fills up down there. My neighbors are like, what is going on down here? They had no clue when they moved in. They're confused. He'd be here, but he frickin' works weird hours, so he can't. So, you know, it's, it's not fun down there, man. I haven't slept since Thursday. Thank you.
Sean. John Small. Welcome, John.
Evening, Mayor Council. Last time I was up here, I said something about where do you find the plan for Ariel? You said something to the effect it'll be on the website. There's nothing on the website, so, you know. Where, the plan, what does it look like, you know? You guys even asked when Morgan was here, you know, what do you have up here to show how this thing is supposed to look? And Morgan didn't have anything. So is there something? Where the sidewalk, how far does the sidewalk go? A plan, you know, you can look at. Say, is there a plan?
I understand.
Okay.
There's a plan.
There's gotta be a plan.
City Manager.
And I don't know the answer to the question. I had, I'd have to go back to the minutes of the last time we discussed this. I had hoped I would get a phone call or something, but I don't know. And I don't know if our communications person knows. So I don't have a good answer for you tonight.
Time is a wasting here.
You want to, you want to see the plan?
Yeah, I'd like to see the plan. Where does the sidewalk go? Does it go all the way up the hill? Does go, you know, it's a week.
I'll ask our engineer, Morgan, if you can.
I'd like to see it, see it.
John needs to see something.
I'm a visual person.
That he needs to touch and look at.
A visual person. Hi, how you doing?
Mayor, members of the council. So I'd be happy to email Mr. Smalls the plan set if I can get the full copy from the City of Maplewood or the pertinent plan sheets specific to Ariel, North St. Paul, and the sidewalk.
Morgan was not here at the last meeting.
I understand that visuals help. We had a technical glitch at the last meeting, but just to answer the question, the sidewalk will be constructed within that striped shoulder on the east side of the road from Ninth Avenue up to Seventeenth Avenue is the extensive.
Or down to Seventeenth.
Down north. Depends on your context there, but yes. So that's a general location, but I'll get Mr. Smalls's email address. I'll send it to him. We'll take care of that.
And, and why not all the way to the apartments? It just blows my mind that it doesn't continue all the way to the cul-de-sac where the apartments, people from the apartments can walk out their door and get on the sidewalk and walk down the hill.
So the extent of the sidewalk was based on actual observations of pedestrian use in the area walking on the side of the road.
Somehow they levitate.
In conjunction with the comprehensive plan in terms of what was planned.
You don't really like to engage, but, John.
Anyway.
Go ahead.
And, okay, that's that part of it. And the other thing is your module, an OpenGov, dealing with zoning permits and the ability to file a complaint. And you can do it in the system, but you gotta be taught by Carrie how to do it because it's not easy. Because I walked in with my phone, and first of all, she says, what do you have, why are you doing this on the phone? Well, the pictures are on the phone. That's why I'm doing it on the phone. And so she goes, well, here, this is the way you do it. Zip, zip, keep, no, no, keep going, keep going, keep going, until you get to the spot at the very end of the keep going that you can tap on it to go to the module. And so you can, process was for me to file a complaint because there is, there's a violation. And so I like doing that because it's, you know, it's available. Do it. And so I filed a complaint, and I filled in, well, I couldn't fill in the right things. Carrie had to change the module in order to include zoning as one of the things you could actually complain about. So that's in there. So yesterday, I was able to input it, and today, a question in these three people that have an email conversation. The one person asked me, well, is your name covered up in this complaint? And I said, I don't know.
See where we're at.
You know, you'd think you'd be, be able to make a complaint anonymously, wouldn't you? You know, good thing to have complainants be anonymous. Well, you are not. The only record for that address is under the name of guess who? Me. Right there for God and everyone to see. You would think that it would be anonymous, but it ain't. Or there should be a warning. By the way, if you put your name down on here, it's open for everyone to see. Do you really want to proceed? Anyway, last item is, is the wonderful CC and the beauty center.
Oh, okay.
And the drop in value from $2,505,000 to $2,100,000. And I thought, that's interesting. Ramsey County, $2,505,000, $2,100,000 for the record for this year. So, hey, that's interesting. Let's dial up Ramsey County. They don't like talking to citizens. They do not like talking to citizens. Anyway, bottom line is, it was supposed to be reviewed this year. It's coming up for its review. But they changed the value last year. Why did you change that? Don't know. Guy who did it, no longer here. It is just crazy. But he's, the guy I talked to, Mike, I only got his first name, said the change was because it has been changed from classification as a library to a racquetball court. And racquetball courts are valued differently than a library.
Cheaper.
Who knows?
Who knows, who knows.
Anybody here know that it's now a racquetball court?
Nope.
Oh, you do know, no, it's a racquetball court. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Lawrence. Welcome, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So my name is Bob Lawrence. I'm a Woodbury resident. I'm currently the.
That's okay.
I, I know, I apologize. I snuck in. I'm currently the president of the Hill Murray Fathers Club. And I just wanted to thank you and tell you how excited we are to partner with the city and with Max and looking forward to a good, long-term relationship.
Well, I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad you guys are able to get into Max. I think it's gonna be a real good, real good deal for you guys.
It'll be good. So, thank you very much. I don't have anything to complain about.
Well, I appreciate it.
You guys are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay. So at this time, City Business Action Items and Recommendations. I'll turn it over to City Manager Stark.
Yes, and this is gonna be a continuation of the workshop in that it's gonna be, at least for this portion, the Finance Director Dan Winnick Show. So I would turn this over to Mr. Winnick.
Thank you, City, City Manager. Again, I don't do this alone, so I have a supporting cast that I'll introduce here in a second. But we're here to award the sale of the nearly $10 million General Obligation Bonds Series, Series 2022A. If you can remember, back last year, on December 7, we approved the current and final plan right now of the Capital Improvement Plan, or Ten Year Capital Improvement Plan incorporated into there are these items that we turned into a street reconstruction plan. We held a public hearing on April 5 of this year. The reconstruction plan includes a number of areas and projects. One, which we heard today about the Ariel Street with Maplewood. On April 19, the City Council adopted a resolution authorizing Baker Tilly to proceed with a negotiation of a sale of bonds of approximately $10 million. We'll be utilizing, in addition to the bond sale, we'll be using our ARPA funds, which is a little over $1.3 million. And then we'll also have some, some city funds. Part of these projects include the annual maintenance amount that we budget for, for street maintenance that was also included in these project bids. So we'll be using those funds for the total project, the total project. You know, in addition to the $10 million, we'll come up to about just under $12 million of total project worth. These bonds of approximately $10 million, approximately $4.6 million is, is street reconstruction bonds. The remaining $5.4 million is backed, they're revenue bonds backed by our utilities. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly to kind of talk to us about the results of the sales of those bonds today.
Welcome, Michaela.
Thank you.
It's awfully quiet.
Sorry.
I'm having tech, technical.
Is it ticking? I can't hear that.
So we're all done. No, I'm kidding. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Again, Michaela Hewitt with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors, here to provide a short presentation on the results of the city's competitive bond sale, as well as the results of the credit rating related to the bond.
We have it.
It's good on our screen.
Here. We do have it here.
Okay. There we go. So this, the first slide before you, this is providing kind of the, one of the main municipal indices that we look at when understanding the trends in interest rates. And you'll see here, it's reflecting the activities over the last five years. And we will see where we are. Currently, there's been a steep incline, steep incline over the last, let's say, six, seven-ish months to where we are today. But again, this is just a given average that we're still, if you look at over the five-year period, we're still in probably, I would say, average rates of what we've seen over that period, even though we're experiencing a kind of a sharp increase right now. So again, as Dan had introduced this topic, the city has issued 9.995 of General Obligation Improvement Bonds. And the proceeds of the bond issue is to be used to finance various utility improvements and street reconstruction projects within the city. And they were identified within the city's street reconstruction project. We did include a 20-year term for the repayment debt service on the bonds. And the estimated true interest cost, or the TIC as it's referred, that we were looking at and updating our, the structures from last Thursday and Friday were about 3.43%. So in, part of our role in working with the city is to facilitate the, the sale of the bonds. And we're proud to announce that there were five bids that were received, so it was a very competitive sale. The lowest bid was received from Northland Securities, Inc., and the actual results of their sale was 3.415, it's actually 3.419. So they initially provided the bid of 3.415. However, with some of the little bit of resizing on the bonds, level debt service, the actual rate is now 3.419, so still very close. And you'll see the, the range of the five bids were between 3.415 and up to 3.664, so they were all very competitive bids. These, I'll just point out, these were issued as bank-qualified, since they were less than $10 million, and that does reflect about a 20 to 30 basis point savings on the interest rate. So by following that method, we were able to result in the 3.4 of the true interest cost. So with the bond issue, there was an updated credit rating for the city. And what does that mean? We worked through standard and pores, and it is really a measure of the city's financial strength and the ability to make the debt service payments in a timely fashion. The, the results of it indicate that the higher the rating, the less likely there would be a default. And the less likely that there is the chance for a default, the lower that the interest rate is that the investors are willing to accept. So the higher the rating, typically the lower the interest rate and the less in total debt service that you'll pay. You'll see here, the city was reaffirmed their credit rating of a double A through S and P. And this is just showing the overall rates of, for all the different rating agencies. So there are comments in the updated rating report for the city, and they reflect all positive comments, the strong economy, growing market value, and continued residential development, both in the city and the surrounding metro area. Strong management, and that's reflected through good financial management practices and policies. Strong budgetary performance and with consistent operating surpluses in the annual budget. A very strong budget flexibility, meaning strong available reserves. And a very strong, that reflects, again, relates to the very strong liquidity. And finally, weak debt, and that's, that's pretty consistent with the way that we're, in Minnesota, but with the long-term planning and rapid amortization of the debt, those are all positive attributes to the city's overall credit rating. So we always like to look at what are possible ways to increase the rating. And you'll see here, the upside scenario is that they would consider raising the rate if the economic growth or other factors that ultimately lead to the city's wealth and income metrics materially improve. And if the city's debt burden moderates despite the future borrowing plans, and again, that's following the, the five-year street reconstruction plan. Downside scenario, we always have to look at it, although it's unexpected, is that you could look at a reduced, lower rating if the city's operating results weaken on a sustained basis, or if any of the economic metrics that are currently viewed as strong would materially weaken. So with that, like I said, it's a short and sweet presentation, but I'd be happy to address any questions.
Any questions for Michaela? City Attorney? If not, is motion to approve, to approve the sale of $9,995,000 in General Obligation Bonds Series 2022A?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I would just add, you know, this was a short presentation, but the amount of time that Finance Director Winnick and the folks at Baker Tilly have put into this has been just amazing. You know, I've been a small part of that, but I know that they have just done great work, so thank you so much.
Michaela always does a good job. Always done a good job, so. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, good. City Manager Stark. Thank you, Michaela.
The next item is the 2022 sanitary sewer lining project to receive bids and award contract, and I would turn this over to City Engineer Dolly.
You know, it's kind of funny, you're, I can't see you over that computer screen there when you're sitting down over there, and I, and I thought you had left.
I surprised you.
Go check.
I was hiding. Thank you, City Manager Stark, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you here tonight is to consider bids received on the 2022 sanitary sewer lining project. As you just heard, this is one of the improvement projects considered within the Capital Improvement Plan and the bond sale that you just approved. We did solicit bids from contractors with, should be on my screen there, in the areas shown on your screen. Generally, this is cured-in-place pipe lining for sanitary sewer pipes, which actually provides structural integrity, also seals against inflow and infiltration issues that we do experience within North St. Paul and our sewer system. So that helps save the public and Met Council some additional clean water that does not need to be treated and ultimately saves everybody money. So that investment in our, in our infrastructure not only saves us from future cave-ins or sinkholes or street repairs that might happen from old sewers collapsing, but also prevents kind of intrusion of water that does not need to be treated downstream from a wastewater standpoint. So different areas, including Casey Lake, which earlier in the year, you may recall, we did have some issues and problems, and we're anticipating that this sewer lining will help alleviate some of those concerns in that area by sealing the pipes against root intrusion. That's another benefit that I didn't mention previously, but that's some of the problems that we have in that area. Our tree roots actually growing into our sanitary sewer, sewer system, searching out the water and causing issues occasionally. So again, this improvement will also minimize maintenance and minimize some of the risks along those lines within our sewer system. So Casey Lake, we have some areas up and around, I'm sorry, the high school is inset map one on the figure there. Inset map two is down and around Seventh Avenue, south of Seventh Avenue, around Helen and east of Helen. And then inset map three is another area of sewer that is just south of Seventh Avenue, kind of west of the new development area in between Margaret and Helen. So those are all areas in need, and a lot of those are identified in conjunction with either planned future pavement investment improvements or current existing ones, again, trying to protect that underground infrastructure, given the investment or planned future investment on the roadways up above. We received two bids, and pleased to report that the low bid of just over $302,000 came in very close to the estimate at $302,365. The bid was actually $302,525.50. I may have never gotten so close to the low bid with an estimate thus far, so that is certainly good news. The contractor is Hydro Clean. We have worked with, or I'm sorry, Vizis Sewer, sorry about that. We've worked with them as well, too, within the city of North St. Paul. So I don't have any hesitations recommending to City Council that you receive all bids and award a contract to the apparent low bidder of Vizis Sewer in the amount of $302,525.50. You do have a resolution in your packet considering that receipt of bids and award of contract, and I'll stand for any questions the council might have.
Any questions for Morgan? We have no questions. I'm looking for the resolution. Should be there. Got it here, got it here. Good. So the motion is for resolution accepting bids and awarding a construction contract for the 2022 sanitary sewer lining project, city project number 22-06. Is there a motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. Any questions? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. City Engineer Morgan.
Okay, if I proceed?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next item for consideration here is receipt of bids and consideration of award of contract. However, we do have slightly different circumstances with this particular project. This is for the Seventh Avenue Street and Utility Improvement Project, which is on your screen right now, the area generally confined by mid-block between, on Seventh Avenue, mid-block between Helen and Margaret, and then west to First Street, also including portions of Helen Street on other side of Seventh Avenue, the intersection with Sepulveda, Fourth Avenue East, some portion of the remaining alley, which is yet to be improved, and also the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Margaret, and extending north kind of to where the 2020 pavement was left off on Margaret Street. Much more complex project involving many different types of construction activity, concrete paving on Seventh Avenue, for example, a lot of different utility work, including water main, sanitary sewer, some very large trunk storm sewer on Helen Avenue, which is old and in need of replacement. As we discussed at the last council meeting, I think the mayor asked some questions, we are living within a period of volatility within the heavy construction industry right now, spike in diesel prices, up 20 to 40 percent in the last couple few months, supply chain issues, material supply with respect to precast concrete, iron and steel products, and just general concerns over labor and trucking and that sort of thing. So as we discussed last time with the council, at that time, the information was that there wasn't anything compelling to cut scope at that time. We did try some strategies with respect to allowing the contractor more time to construct the project, thinking that that might give some allowances and some flexibility. Unfortunately, the low bid that was received was approximately 20 percent over the estimate, so the estimate was just over $5 million. Our low bidder, which is a good contractor, is just about $6 million, so a premium of about 20 percent, that's not including any sort of contingencies. As you heard with the sale of the bonds, we do have a capped funding availability program with which to work with for these planned improvements that we have that have not yet bid. We're very fortunate that up to this point, our projects have come in on budget or slightly underestimate, and so, again, with some contingencies moving forward, we're very confident that we'll have good success in terms of completing those projects within budget, again, knowing that they're capped within the bond program and for this capital improvement program. But when you get into this situation with something that is this much, you know, 20 percent overestimate, and then knowing that there may still be some unknowns with supply chain issues, it is of concern. And so we took a very, very, very close look at this, trying to make a determination of whether it might be worth moving forward, trying to absorb some contingencies, would there be room under the bond program in other areas? And frankly, I just didn't feel comfortable moving forward. After consultation with Director of Public Works Richie and Finance Director Winnick, my recommendation to council at this time is to receive the bids, however, reject them at this time, and consider repackaging this for a bid and construction in 2023. There's a couple different things that we can try to reap the benefit of in this certain situation. Number one is that we know how three good contractors within the, working within the community, have priced this out at this time, and so that gives us a much more accurate indication and up-to-the-minute indication in terms of how suppliers are pricing things like precast concrete structures or pipe. It also allows us to then evaluate the future rebid on this project and build in some flexibility, like alternates, for example. The main priority here has always been Seventh Avenue, Fourth Avenue and the intersection of Margaret, I would call secondary priorities, and if we can package those in a rebid scenario such that if the bids come in similar, and I think within the industry, and there was an article in Finance and Commerce that just came out Monday of this week, the industry is saying that 18 to 24 months is probably to be expected in terms of these types of issues with pricing, inflationary measures, concerns over volatility, and frankly, also it's important to note that, you know, this is not a greed thing by contractors. I think within the industry, we recognize that contractors are bidding defensively. Okay, so they're trying to protect themselves against fluctuations and on their hard costs that they have no control on either, and they certainly don't want to be put in a situation where they're going to lose money or not be profitable to the point where it's going to hurt their business. So it's a very tentative situation, repackaging a rebid and a delay of the project. In my mind, October is a good time to think about, knowing that lead time on precast right now is 20 to 28 weeks. If we were able to rebid this and find a point within the capped finance constraints for this particular project, which is just over 6.8 million dollars, and that's total project for everything, contingencies and indirect soft costs, knowing that we will be able to either award alternates or subtract alternates to be able to find that sweet spot from a funding standpoint, we'll be in a much more comfortable position financially. There'll be less risk for the city, and again, knowing that there's a hard cap there, I think that's really, really important consideration and something that I don't feel should be taken lightly, and certainly not something that I'm going to risk recommending moving forward on just without very strong consideration here, which is why I'm kind of explaining all these things. In addition, I think that, you know, we took, again, another real tight look at every single line item, how all the different contractors bid. I think, you know, I found one item that could have been estimated slightly stronger. Again, when we estimate more quantity, we reduce or remove risk that there might be additional costs on a project, so again, that repackaging will allow us to even tighten things up further, minimize the risk for the project overall, and again, try to hit that 6.8 million dollars for a total project cost without consideration of trying to find other sources of revenue, which aren't there right now, right? We're working within the confines of a bond sale that has said, this is what we have for street improvements, for water, for sewer, that sort of thing. So we want to be very respectful of that. One additional benefit is that it will help the car show, I think, in this year, in 2022, by being able to fully access Margaret Street and Seventh Avenue through the season, while we focus on existing contractual obligations and construction in the surface parking lot, which is ongoing right now, off of Sixth, south of Seventh, also work over by the high school, and in addition on Ariel Street, as we just discussed earlier. So we do have plenty of things to be working on and concentrating to make sure that the contractors do a good job. Again, I think that it's fully reasonable that substantially the work would be completed in 2023, which is not much different than what we talked about in this bid solicitation. It would just be tightened up, we would have some work that would occur in 2024 in terms of final lift of asphalt paving and that sort of thing, but again, the goal would be to complete the work on, in these areas to the greatest extent within the financial constraints that we have in calendar 2023, and coordinate with folks like the Car Show and other people, public downtown separately, and importantly, on this, this project alone, without other kind of overlapping concerns, such as the parking lot, which is in fairly near proximity. So with that, the resolution that I've prepared in your packet is not for award of contract, but for receipt of the bids and rejecting the bids with consideration for future rebid. Again, my plan would be in an October timeframe with that 28-week lead time on precast concrete and some ductile products like fittings and hydrants and that sort of thing. If we have a contractor under contract in October, for example, they can lock in their pricing, they can set their orders, we can even pay them materials on hand, and they can store that through the winter, so that we capture the pricing at that time if it does move forward and up between October and 2023, and then they can pull that stuff out and build it in 2023, and we'll have a known cost at that time. So that's the approach. I think it's a good recommendation, giving all the different scenarios that we're dealing with and the volatility of the market right now, and I'll stand for any questions that the council might have.
Any questions for Morgan? Councilmember Thorson.
So we're delaying the project because we're over budget, is what you're saying?
That would be, yes.
And scaling back?
Potentially.
Won't help getting it done this year as planned? Like, do we have to do Fourth Avenue and Margaret a part of this? I mean, I, it's just, I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but it's frustrating because, you know, we're trying to stay in this, this schedule because there's so much of the city that needs to get done. I mean, back in 2018, or I believe it was 2019, it was Gerald, Shawnee, Chippewa, around Casey, Casey Park, and then that got delayed because of the downtown, you know, and then this is taking precedent over that area, and there's other areas that continue to get worse and worse, and so now it's, I'm hearing we're not, we're just not gonna, even, we're doing Ariel, but it's not a whole reconstruct. We're kind of getting off of that schedule, and we're falling further behind, and the problems are just going to continue to compound and get worse when we delay these road projects. So I mean, I guess I'm a little, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know what to say. I mean, it seems like there should be an option to, you know, I suppose it's too far late now to, to look at another area of the city that needs to get done, but just the whole idea of, of just putting it off for a year and not doing anything else kind of doesn't sit well with me. But I don't know, that's my thoughts.
Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Morgan, for your analysis. You know, I'm, I'm just wondering in terms of funding, so if, if we were not to reject it, where would you get the funding from?
So a large portion of the overage, if you want to call that, in terms of exceedance of estimate is in the, some, some of it is in the streets, some of it is across the board in the utilities, but a major portion of it is in the streets. So the streets, as you know, are funded, I mean, not only with the bond funds, but that impacts the general tax levy as opposed to, you know, enterprise funds for like surface water or water utility or for sanitary sewer. So it would have to be a combination across the board with which to make up that difference. Based on, you know, just rough projections in terms of if we awarded the contract as is, right now, the planned total project cost is 6.8 million within the bond sale and within the capital improvement plan, we would be at, at or slightly over $8 million. I mean, so that, that's, you know, over a million dollars, 1.2 million dollars, let's say approximately, that some portion of that would have to be made up by the general tax levy, which would affect the general taxes for the public. Some portion of that would need to be made up with unidentified, as of right now, sources within the utility enterprise funds as well too, which would impact or affect rates more so than is currently planned or projected, I guess, for the foreseeable future, knowing that there's been a deep financial analysis on the capital improvement plan as it stands today, and also the bond sale as it stands to fund these particular projects right now. So I can't answer specifically where it would come from, but those are the typical sources that, you know, if we were to move forward today, that, that's where it would have to be made up. Again, you know, if it's 5 percent or, you know, you know, it's a lot of money, no matter how you look at it, but if it's an overage that's slightly less, and we've navigated that before, and it's something that, from a staff standpoint, there's some level of comfort that we can, you know, make that up, or we can absorb that. Those are the conversations that I was having last week after bids were opened, and, you know, do we think that that's reasonable? At a 1.2 million dollar premium, that just seems too strong to be able to try to power through, in my opinion.
Yeah, thank you for considering all the different contributions of, you know, different pockets of money. As we look at the infrastructure funding coming from the federal government, do you know of any, you know, allocations or priorities that that money is going to be allocated to here on the more local level?
So it's coming. There's still information that we don't have yet in terms of where, how that's going to be coming down. For example, our understanding is that for drinking water, for clean water, that's going to be distributed through basically the same accounts or, I guess, vehicles by which they distribute the legacy funds. And so, you know, this project hasn't been, you know, earmarked or identified specifically for those funds, but certainly I think there's opportunities moving forward for future projects, whether that is within this bond program or future projects. For example, you know, the next ones that are on the docket are up by Casey Lake in terms of streets and utilities, in terms of a two-phased approach to address those areas. So that could be a category, but we won't know if that will be surface water specific only, or a combination of surface water and water utility, meaning drinking water, those are two main components. And there may be some available for reconstruction of local streets as well too, but we won't know specifically until we have more information available with which to identify those priority projects, you know, make applications, and our understanding is that those are all going to be competitive as well too. So there will be a lot of other local agencies applying for the same dollars.
Thank you. Do you have a timeline in which that may or may not come?
Maybe, is Michaela still here? I'm hoping that sometime soon here, that, you know, the, the federal government has identified the funds, we know, we know that it's coming, we know it's been authorized by the federal government, but it does take some time to actually allocate and get those dollars to the states, and the states are responsible then, either through DOT programs or otherwise, to be able to distribute those down. Unknown whether or not some of those will be prioritized, for example, to state aid streets, which Seventh Avenue is a state aid street, but Masavia Avenue, for example, in the Casey Lake area is not, right? So there may be some qualifications that we're going to need to pay close attention to. I would anticipate that in the coming months, we should get some more information, but there's been no guarantees or qualifications in terms of when we're going to hear exactly and what, but it will be highly followed by all engineers, especially at the local level.
Thank you, Morgan.
Are there any maintenance we can do in the meantime, between now and then, that, like Councilmember Thorson said, there are a lot of needs, and I notice even my neighborhood's not even on here, and it's, it is really bad. The Casey Lake area is getting really bad. Is there anything we can do that?
So, yeah, in these, in the bond identified projects, there are some areas that are identified, and these were gone through by Public Works last year, actually, and identified in terms of first tier, second tier. I think there always has to be care when a project area is identified for significant investment or reconstruction, because if you're going to place a Band-Aid on something, you know, you don't want it to cost too much, because then that's going to be undone and redone. On the flip side, that can also, also buy you a few years and save some money in terms of pothole patching and that sort of thing. So with respect to the Casey Lake neighborhood, for example, you know, those roads are certainly beyond, I would say, expected ideal candidates for a maintenance overlay, because they are ready for reconstruction right now. However, given, you know, the need and the concern for just the timing of everything and inflationary costs, it may, may be worth considering, looking at where some of those other maintenance dollars were planned to be spent outside of these projects, but just by Public Works in terms of, you know, doing maintenance overlays, which is heavier duty than pothole patching, but less duty than like a reconstruction, for example. But again, that may buy us some time. It's not gonna, when you overlay over a road that is maybe cracked or failed, some of those cracks will come through, and again, that's the balancing act of not spending too much, so maybe we don't do a full mill and overlay, knowing that there's not much of a road left to mill, but we certainly could look at potentially an overlay. It will crack, but it might save some time or give some time with respect to bridge that timeline from now until, I don't know what's in the plan, I believe it was 2024 for the first portion of Casey Lake, right? Which is not included in, in this bond sale, but that- Which is not included in, in this bond sale, but that would have to be a consideration for a separate future bond sale for either one or both of the Casey Lake half and half projects, which started out as one project, but then based on the costs, it was decided a few years ago to try to split that into two.
So, would you take a, a reassessment?
I can.
In the meantime, and take a look and see if there are areas?
I was just shared a photo from a resident on, I think it was Masabe or maybe Gerald. And I haven't talked to Public Works yet, so I don't know what they've committed to where outside of these projects that I've been working on. But we can see if it makes sense, maybe not for the whole area, but maybe the worst street or the worst streets, again, to try to get them addressed and covered up in a temporary fashion without too much of an investment to be able to get, you know, even one or two years would be helpful if we can get a couple few years in a little more comfort level. And understanding from the public that, you know, we're, we're trying to do the best we can until we can get there to fully reconstruct them. It's certainly worth considering, given the fact that, you know, the, the city Public Works does have kind of a, a set budgetary number year after year with which to work with. So, maybe this year, if not this year, maybe next year, and I think we can certainly see how that works within a prioritization strategy. I mean, any plan is certainly subject to change and reevaluation based on whatever might happen at any given moment. A series of water main breaks, you know, we've had, we actually did an overlay of, oh, my gosh. Twenty sixteen, it was, it was at eighteenth?
Nineteenth?
Nineteenth, it was, so it was something where it was scheduled for work that year, and that spring, for whatever reason, it kind of exploded, and we had to do a block or a block and a half just to hold it together for a few months. So, what I'm thinking is, you know, this might be a reprioritization that's a little more planned out than that. That was kind of an emergency situation, we couldn't have the road go to, to gravel necessarily, even though it was already, you know, planned for reconstruction. You know, we don't want people having difficulty driving through the area. And every spring thaw, spring snow melt and thaw, you know, those potholes are kind of problematic and can be issues for Public Works to keep up with from a pothole patching standpoint. So, I will convene with Public Works, and we can see if, if, from a funding standpoint, from a reprioritization standpoint, if some of those other areas might warrant being folded into the mix, knowing that we have delayed some of the other project areas, and also knowing that we've got some late breaking concerns that are later information than we had last year when those maintenance areas were kind of identified. So, I think that's a, a fair effort.
Any other questions for Morgan, councilmember Thorson?
So, this particular project, they're coming in around one point two million over what your initial plan was. Is that correct?
For total project cost, that was, that was the projection, correct?
And how much was on aerial, the addition of the sidewalks? I tried pulling that up, I couldn't find it, what was that addition?
It was estimated at two seventy-five, the bids came in at about two twenty-five for the sidewalk add.
And the hope is that we delay this and then rebid it later in October, that at that time, it's gonna come in lower?
The projection within the industry is that the inflated prices and supply chain issues are expected to continue for the next eighteen to twenty-four months with now, not any significantly identified like relief, right? So, the idea is to be able to rebid, to be able to find that spot within the project identified budget of six point eight million dollars, so that we can have an improvement area, but not have a contractual obligation to complete something that we don't have the funding for.
So, it would, it would be rebidding, but it would be scaled back?
Right.
What, so I'm looking at Margaret. Part of that road is concrete, part of it's asphalt, part of the concrete's been patched with asphalt. Sections have, of asphalt have been replaced with, I mean, it's just a hodgepodge from Silver Lake down to, to hallway. Is this section here that is highlighted, is that a section that's currently concrete? That's slated to be replaced with concrete?
It, I think portions of it are asphalt, but the original plan prepared under previous city manager was for that concrete to come down up to and, including the intersection of Fourth Avenue. It doesn't have to be, we certainly could stop the concrete where it is right now and continue from there on.
And obviously, sorry, I know all the benefits of concrete versus asphalt, so we don't need to get into that. But, you know, if we're looking for cost savings, you know, why wouldn't we consider that? I mean, I don't, you know, i- is that section of Margaret such a high-traffic area that it merits having concrete versus other parts of, of the city that are possibly more traffic, more, you know, that don't have as much? What am I trying to say here? I mean, I don't, what, what are the criteria for having concrete on a road section? And, and is this one that falls into that? And even if it is, knowing that, yes, asphalt does not last as long in theory, because there's all sorts of things that can cause concrete to fail earlier that we've seen in town. But, you know, what, is that being considered as well? Like, maybe instead of using concrete in all these sections, we, we go to asphalt. Does that help us get under the, you know, the financial problem we're having here?
It certainly will help. I mean, so, you know, the life cycle cost for asphalt versus concrete over sixty years, let's say, is about the same. But on concrete pavement, you're upfronting all that cost, and there's very little, if any, maintenance moving forward on asphalt. You do have to kind of stay on top of it with ceiling cracks and overlays and that sort of thing. So, the initial capital investment would be lower for asphalt. In my opinion, there's no reason why you couldn't leave the extents or the limits of the concrete pavement where they are now and do the rest of this as asphalt. We were simply following the plan as kind of originally conceived. And I had assumed that that was maybe discussed with the council. My understanding is that's more of a, it was more of a aesthetic and gateway into downtown kind of approach, so that at the intersection of Fourth, which is a transitionary place between the residential area coming north on Margaret into what was the twenty twenty redevelopment area, and then with the Sentinel Building, and then ultimately to Seventh Avenue, which has historically all been concrete, and was thoroughly discussed by council in terms of concrete versus asphalt. And the decision at that time on Seventh Avenue was to keep the concrete areas of pavement concrete. But certainly, if council wanted to give that direction to staff and move forward with, you know, the rebid of the project on Margaret Street to keep that as asphalt, that's an easy change and would be expected to maybe save for that seg- segment of roadway, potentially twenty to thirty percent, that's just off the top of my head.
Twenty to thirty percent? Okay.
On that area of roadway, correct?
Well, I mean, if we can do what we did on aerial, request a bid with and without a sidewalk, I don't see what, 'cause to me, from what I'm hearing is this, this project is gonna get delayed because of cost overages. Part of that is concrete in areas that, again, I know the, in theory, concrete lasts longer than asphalt, but a main factor is aesthetics, you know? Meanwhile, the road is completely, I mean, when you're driving home tonight, drive that section of Margaret. Take that down to South Avenue, wherever you're going home, and tell me that that road can be delayed because of aesthetics. I mean, it's, again, I just, this doesn't sit well with me delaying a project area that needs to get done, especially when we could have done another area that needs to get done. So, yeah, hopefully, we can, you know, sharpen our pencils and look at all the options and not just one, 'cause there's more than one way to pave a street.
Is there a way to, to bid that out?
Absolutely, if council's okay with that being asphalt, we can do it either or. Or just move to asphalt in entirety, so it's whatever council's comfortable giving direction on.
I'd like to hear from the council in regards to, or more discussion on it. Councilmember Wong?
Just from a process standpoint, Morgan, you touched about rebidding this in October. Would, as part of that rebidding process, would you come back to the city council again, or is this the, kind of the opportunity?
No, we can come back if we want more discussion on that, that's up to the council. Yeah, I'm perfectly comfortable with that. If we wanna have a deeper discussion on the scope and how we wanna bid this, I think that would be appropriate. Doesn't have to.
And at that time, we would know what the cost savings would be. Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, can you speak to a little bit of the maintenance piece of asphalt by Public Works? What, what that would kind of play out to be, how much capacity would we have to pay for?
Regular maintenance life cycle of asphalt? Or what Public Works has currently been doing in terms of trying to address areas?
Yeah, just looking at whether, you know, if we were to look at an asphalt sidewalk, what would the maintenance cost of that be compared to a concrete?
We were talking about street pavement, I wouldn't necessarily recommend asphalt for sidewalks. I mean, for a couple of different reasons, we need to control the grades, and that's much more easy with concrete versus asphalt. But in a general sense, asphalt is not jointed like concrete. It's, it's a flexible pavement, it's designed to flex, and it will crack at some point. And in terms of the regular maintenance that the city has been really good about keeping up on in terms of the streets that we've reconstructed since two thousand fourteen, is every three to five years to seal the cracks. So, you may have seen that around town where they kind of put the tar in the cracks, and they put toilet paper, and it looks a little silly for a little while until that wears off. But that actually, although it's not pretty to look at, it does provide a great amount of benefit, especially when we're sealing kind of the edges where the water runs. That keeps the water out of the subbase underneath the pavement. When you have cracks, some of that runs in there. If those cracks are left too long, that can actually contaminate that subgrade, the gravel underneath, and sometimes you wind up with tenting, which we've seen on Helen Avenue, which we had to address in, in twenty sixteen. And I think twenty seventeen, we finished the rest of Helen north of thirty-six. And so, by keeping the cracks sealed, then the general kind of next thing that you would see at about fifteen years plus or minus would be a mill and overlay. That would be similar to some of these maintenance overlays. These maintenance overlays are a little bit more simplistic than a regular mill and overlay, but that's generally just grinding off the top portion of the project and resealing the top. There's still some cracks underlying that will reflect through over time. But again, you stay on, on top of those every three to five years. Generally, on average, about every fifteen years, you're overlaying while you're sealing cracks in between. And by the time you get to year, depending on a lot of different factors, sixty plus or minus, you've overlaid it a few times and enough times that it's generally a candidate for full reconstruction again. If at any point in those maintenance areas, we have things like a section of settled concrete curb and gutter or failed concrete or something, we might replace that. That was the general scope for aerial, right? A little bit more in-depth in terms of reclamation rather than a mill and overlay, but certainly not a full reconstruct. So, the goal, again, if you're staying on top of maintenance, is to have an asphalt roadway that lasts sixty years or more before it needs to be fully reconstructed. And with a concrete roadway, again, you're, you have to do less in terms of that ongoing maintenance, but you're upfront, upfronting that cost. It depends on who you're talking to, a concrete supplier, an asphalt supplier. But in my opinion, generally, if you look at it through the life cycle of either kind of road, it does come out about the same. But again, some of that's upfront, less maintenance, which does have an impact on Public Works operations, too, if there's less maintenance involved there. But in general, when you get southern Minnesota, close to Iowa, Iowa, a lot of Iowa does a lot of concrete streets, a lot more than you see in Minnesota, and in Minnesota's Twin Cities, you know, it's kind of, it's preference and, and a little bit of each, I guess, depending on the area. As I recall, with some of the discussions downtown, again, the, the idea that the concrete reflects light at night kind of brightens up the downtown, that was certainly a preference. And that built off of the nineteen seventy-something, initial reconstruction of Seventh Avenue that, that kind of set the standard in terms of concrete roadway pavement. So, that's the general asphalt program now. Those fif- every fifteen years or three to five years, that can flex different streets, depending on whether they were built on swamps versus built on a gravel pit, will, will last longer or less as long, depending on, and also depending on weather and the timing of freeze, freeze thaw things that happen in the spring, but that's the general approach. Some of what Public Works has been doing for the last few years, I would say, in terms of maintenance overlays, which started up on Fifteenth by the Richardson School, which is a very successful application of just a minimal mill on, on the sides, and then overlay just on top of the road with very little milling in the middle. And filling, patching and, and kind of supporting where you needed to in the middle of the road, that's performing really well. Looks good, you know, it's not just an overlay that we think will only get like one or two or three years out of, and that road wasn't in great shape before that. And so, the hope is that for modest investment in that kind of an improvement, that we can help make strides to be able to plan for the significant investments, you know, where it's needed most, depending on all the factors that, you know, council has to consider with these things.
Thank you.
Is it the same lay, is it different from a residential street to something more of a commercial street like this? The asphalt, are you laying heavier asphalt than what you normally would lay like on a, on a side street? Residential street?
So, that was one of the things I had to go to school for, was actually pavement design. And it has to do with the thickness of the asphalt, the thickness of the gravel underneath it. In areas of poor soils such as North St. Paul, where we have a lot of clays, we generally have to provide a section of sand underneath that that can range from eighteen inches in thickness to twenty-four or thirty-six inches, depending on how bad the soils are underneath. You know, some of the areas that we reconstructed in twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen were of very poor soils, and some of those residential neighborhoods were actually built in areas where there are little ponds and ditches and, and cricks and things like that, right? And so, we had to do a little more substantial section there. It's not so much the asphalt, but it's what's underneath the asphalt in terms of what you dig out and then build back up with sand and then gravel and then asphalt on top. And concrete's similar, but slightly different in that, you know, you still need a subsection underneath, but that, it's, the concrete pavement is not a flexible pavement, it's rigid. And so, it's designed to flex at the joints that are provided within the concrete pore itself. But it's not expected to kind of move as much as you would see on an asphalt roadway. In residential areas, I mean, I, I very rarely see concrete streets.
No, so, is this different asphalt being laid than a residential street? Is it heavier, or is it a bigger, thicker base, is it?
In the commercial area, so on, on Helen, and, and the approaches to Seventh Avenue, that, that would be a heavier duty pavement section than what we would see on Fourth Avenue. So, we do balance.
There is a, okay.
What we're putting, whether it's kind of considered a collector roadway versus a residential street. Knowing that Fourth Avenue, for example, other than trash collectors and school buses, maybe, is not gonna be carrying as much heavy truck traffic as Helen Street would, for example, right? So, those are two different pavement sections that would be planned out, included in the same project, and it's no problem for the contractor to switch back and forth. But it doesn't make any sense to build a residential street, you overbuild that, right? You, you build it appropriately to the amount of traffic and the type of traffic that it's expected to receive.
And I'm, I'd like to maybe see asphalt, see what that comes, comes in at.
Yeah, I would too, I would too, just to see the cost difference.
That's easily done.
If we did that and see where we come in, because I agree, we, we need to get these projects done and. Councilmember Thorson?
Out of curiosity, and I'm not trying to make this into a asphalt versus concrete guy, 'cause I have no preference or investments or whatever, but.
Right.
How long have you worked as engineer for the city?
About twelve years.
Okay. How many miles of streets do we have? Do you know that off the top of your head? I know the answer, I'm looking at it.
It's on our website.
Yeah, forty-three miles.
I was gonna say forty, okay.
So, I, I'm, you can approximate, but if not, I don't know, I'm not trying to give you an ass- you an assignment that's going to cost a city a bunch of money. But of the 43 miles, what percentage would you say is concrete versus asphalt of our streets?
Not including.
Talking streets?
Any, you know, county roads or anything like that, just specifically limited to city streets, I'd say 10%.
10% concrete versus 90% asphalt?
Yeah, plus or minus, that's my approximation. It's really limited to Seventh Avenue.
I was gonna say, so down.
I think some consistency there.
Yeah.
And I think the reasoning is, I mean, you know, for whatever, yeah, and we talked about the aesthetics, but, you know, I think a huge driver is at its cost, right? And, you know, you go to like a state like Florida, they have beautiful concrete highways that last probably five to six times longer than a concrete section of road. Like I'm thinking of 35W up to Duluth that gets torn up every five, six years. And, you know, concrete may be a superior product to asphalt, but in this climate and weather, I mean, it's a crap shoot, you're dealing with soil conditions and weather conditions when it's being poured. But same with asphalt, that can fail like we've seen on Helen. So, but, you know, I'll just again, I think, you know, I want to make it clear that I would like to see some cost comparisons for this project to try to get it done here without delaying it another year.
I can ask a question. So let's say either through value engineering or through, let's say somehow the markets changed and you thought prices were going to be better. How quickly, if we said, oh, things have changed, our assumptions have changed, something's changed, how quickly could we get back out to bid?
Well, getting out to bid is one thing, and that shouldn't take that long, okay? That's simply a matter of repackaging. And if we want to have a deeper discussion like at a workshop, for example, that might be appropriate. I think right now it's the lead time on some of the things like pipe, precast structures, some of the storm sewer pipe on Helen Street is like 84-inch custom-made stuff that, you know, would it be expected to take a significant amount of time for the manufacturer and supplier to be able to commit to providing to the city? So, for example, even if we were awarding a contract here tonight, it's a very good chance in understanding, at least in terms of what I'm hearing from all the contractors, that some portions of the project would not even be ready to be installed for several months, which limits the amount of improvement that could happen in 2022 anyway at this time. And that's a market condition thing that's independent of, that's just the supply of materials at this time. For example, there's some suppliers for ductile iron fittings and hydrants that have stopped taking orders from contractors and they're limiting their inventory to, like if a city needs to buy a hydrant for something like an emergency, they want to have some on stock, but they're not selling to contractors. Or they're only holding their prices for two weeks, which is not really fair to the contractor if they're bidding and cities are holding their bids for 30 or 60 days with which to award and then get underway with the project, right? So we can certainly turn it around and bid it faster than October. My thought on October is that that gives ample time for a six-month lead time for ordering of materials, precast, manholes, whatever, in October, and it will be ready in May. There's no reason why it shouldn't be, right? And we shouldn't have to face any delays, knowing that they should be able to order their materials and it can, other than maybe shut down over the holidays and deer hunting season, which does occur in the construction industry. But that's my thought on October. We could bid it earlier. And the earlier you bid it, the contractors are going to be still potentially prone to defensive bidding, knowing that they don't know exactly what the price of diesel fuel, for example, will be in May of next year. Sometimes there's quantity purchases by contractors or lock-in prices with respect to asphalt mix, for example, but we won't know exactly what those will be or what they're going to be dealing with in August versus October. So October, I think, is the latest timeframe if we were going to do it before the holidays. We certainly could try in January, but again, if we awarded a contract in January or early February, which you might think would be a really great early and competitive time to bid a project, if in fact these supply issues are continuing and we're looking at six months out for our precast structures, well, then they're not going to be able to start on work until June, as opposed to when we would want them to start, which is May 15th, when road restrictions come off, or earlier if they can get out there earlier. So that's kind of my estimation in terms of repackaging everything quickly and then when could a contractor get started.
And would it be possible to look at a project like this and know that, and maybe this isn't the case, it probably isn't, that this portion of the project contains a lot of things that have these lead time issues? This portion of the project doesn't have as many components that have these lead time issues, and maybe we separate them out and have two different packages?
I can look at that, and I have looked at it a little bit. Unfortunately, there's utilities under all of these roads and the pipes and utilities are what's unfortunately constraining things rather than the paving. If this was just a simple road project without any storm sewer, for example, that might lend itself to that. We can take a deep dive on that and we should probably pick a workshop date with which we can kind of unpeel all these things. I can talk about that. We can talk about some of the bid alternates and see how, given the fact that we have the benefit of seeing how three contractors bid this project now and knowing that things will probably continue, you know, for the foreseeable future, be able to see how we can project something that will either deliver something, you know, sooner rather than later, if that's what the council wants to see, even if that's a smaller portion of the project and then a bigger portion of the project later. I mean, I'm not opposed to any of that. It's always important to remember that there are some economies of scale, so the smaller portions of a project that you peel out might not carry the benefit of volume pricing, for example. And that goes to linear feet of pipe. It also goes to number of tons of asphalt. I mean, you tend to get better pricing if it's a larger quantity of whatever it is, so.
So what I'm hearing is that no matter what we do right now, 2023 is going to be part of the project for the Seventh Street because of the lead time for a lot of this material that you need. So no matter what we decide tonight, Seventh Street is probably going to be put on hold for the summer.
We can look at options, but again, I have to always kind of think of and come to you all with conservative and I think safe, if maybe that safe is not the right word, but something that provides a little bit more expected return on your investment than speculation. I do, I'm terrible in Las Vegas. I don't like it. That's just me personally. But yeah, again, that's my estimation.
Yep.
Now, not saying that there aren't some things that we can think about and look at and potentially peel off. I mean, another thing I was thinking about is the landscaping in the older portion of the new downtown, which was peeled out of the last project. And I know that there's some need for that landscaping in the near term. You know, landscaping and plant nurseries are maybe not immune for some of the issues that we're seeing out here, but we certainly could try a smaller quote package, at least for the landscaping in the older part of the Seventh Avenue project to see if we can't get that in the ground before the end of the year. And there may be other pieces too, right? So I, knowing that we just opened bids last week and we had to present them to here to you today, this is, this is my recommendation at this time, but we can have further conversation on it and whether we bid in October or July or September or January. I mean, we can have further discussion to get to a plan where you all are comfortable and you like the different options available. We're still, I guess estimators are, engineers and estimators are subject to the latest and most recent bid information that we have available. We don't really know how contractors are going to price it until they actually do. So there's still a little bit of a guessing game there, but that's why you try to build in contingencies. When bids come in, overestimate to the extent that you've already burnt through your planned contingencies, that's a red flag, and that's what we're trying to avoid moving forward.
So I'm hearing from the council that we're not opposed to the asphalt. So.
I could take that direction. Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay. Boy, any other questions for Morgan? And you got direction?
You have a resolution.
Yep, I had that right here.
In terms of rejecting the bids received.
Yep, so the resolution is accepting bids received and rejecting all bids for the Seventh Avenue Utility and Street Improvements City Project Number 2201. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. Any other discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, so we'll wait to see.
We will schedule a workshop item with the council here moving forward in the coming weeks to have further discussion on this particular project and bidding strategies and estimates on the options moving forward.
So would it be safe to tell the car show people that?
That'll be my next phone call. I mean, Bob's not here, so I was going to tell a person, but I'll call him after tomorrow.
I think the sooner the better.
And in fact.
The businesses too, they need to know.
Yeah, we can put some communication out to the businesses as well through Kerry. We also have our construction, our weekly construction meeting tomorrow, and I think the car show folks have been attending that. So if I, if they come to that, I can fill them in as well, too. So both Bob and Mr. Fabio.
Bruce. Bruce.
And others, so. So thank you.
All right, Morgan, thank you. City manager?
I do have a couple of things, I'm going to try to keep it brief. Just an update on the storms last week. I know with the sunny weather we've had over the weekend, it's easy to forget how stormy it was in the earlier part of last week. But on Monday, a tree fell over during the storm on a van and power lines to a home and acts across the power lines in the alley. And fire crews secured that area, advised the electric department and remained on the scene until they were, until the electric crew got the scene safe. Then on Wednesday, at almost 11:00 PM, the fire department responded to a report of smell of smoke. When crews arrived, they upgraded the call to a first alarm that included Maplewood and Oakdale Fire Departments. The fire was in the attic and it was a, my understanding is the type of attic and the dimensions of it were a little challenging. Crews were on the scenes for, seen for two hours. I believe it included about 25 fire personnel from North St. Paul and from other groups. Ultimately, there were no injuries reported and the damage was fairly minimal. In terms of the public works crews, they spent quite a bit of time clearing debris from all the catch basins around town in anticipation of the storm so that there wouldn't be localized flooding. And they did have a lot of tree limbs, including one that Councilmember Thorson sent me some pictures of them cleaning up. So they did a great job. They spent some time pumping water off of the ball fields to make them playable for the games. And then finally, the electric utilities crew responded to a power outage due to the storms on Wednesday night. The power outage affected about 135 households and four linesmen were able to respond, troubleshoot the problem. And even enduring heavy winds and heavy rain, they had the power restored in just over an hour. Wanted to give you a brief personnel update. Since March, four police officers have been hired. One police officer is in the final process of being hired as well. With that, the police will be at their full complement. And then one finance clerk starts Monday, and we talked about the benefits of that in terms of coverage and overlap. And then the posting closed on our community development director on Friday. We had 15 applicants. There are, I feel pretty good about a handful of them and we'll move forward with interviews probably in about 10 days, two weeks maybe. So that's my reports for the night.
Very good, thank you. Reports of council, commissions, committees, Councilmember Cole?
With respect to time, I'll keep them very short. The Economic Development Authority met on 5/10. Primary topic was the lot improvement at 2579 Seventh Street. The EDA was very impressed with the way that it looks, but a little less robust as to the enthusiasm that they had with the price tag that came in on it. So the EDA asked that the space be taken a look at and see if they can come up with a better space cost balance initiative to move forward with developing that land. Next EDA meeting will be June 14th at 3 o'clock here in City Hall. Following that, there was an EDA Planning Commission meeting that was, that took place at 5 o'clock. Three primary topics, sign ordinance, as we talked to earlier tonight, basically to simplify and streamline the ordinance, a little conversation around the Lilly Building, and again, the conversation around 2579 Seventh Street. And again, the primary reason for the EDA and Planning Commission isn't, is more of a, the ability to keep both commission, the commission and the authority apprised as to what's going on and not having a lot of overlay here or in keeping conversation topics alive. And we were all in attendance, so I'm sure you'll each have your own piece to take away from that. Next meeting, July 21st. And lastly, the park and rec meeting, this month scheduled the 25th at 6:30 here at City Hall. And after that, we're moving outside.
Perfect, and it's been beautiful out. Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, so the planning commission had just met, as you've seen the sign ordinance, so I won't repeat that again, but a lot of hard work did go into that. So I do want to thank our city planner and Lisa Ritchie and the planning commission for doing a lot of work and long nights to streamline that. As for the planning commission, we're fully staff, fully commissioned now, so thank you for that approval. I believe the redevelopment master plan will be going to the planning commission here soon for review. As for the Arts and Culture Commission, we did have a resignation due to personal matters and family matters, but we were able to fill both spots, actually. We had a lot of great candidates and thank you for approving those commissioners as well. In terms of projects, we have the downtown banner draft that's been proposed, as well as to Councilmember Thorson's concern regarding logos, we're in compliance or within the guidelines of that. And then, let's see, our next meeting is the first of, first Wednesday and first Thursday, first Thursday for planning and first Wednesday for the Arts and Culture Commission. And we had some special guests in our last meeting, too, from the Rotary Club, and they had discussed a potential Rotary Clock as a potential project in the future. That's it, thanks.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, last week at the Business Association luncheon, we had Roger Fink. He's the owner of Anchor U Apartments, and he was very complimentary of our city and our staff, how it works very seamlessly. Because he's developed Polar Ridge, so he's familiar with North St. Paul. So that was good to hear. And the 19th Avenue student-built house is really coming together again. The siding is almost on, the roof shingles are on, inside the cabinets and countertops are being installed, and it's really shaping up. I took a little tour of it, so it's pretty impressive. That's all I have.
Nice, have they set a price yet?
No. But it looks like July it'll be ready.
Councilmember Thorson?
I have nothing.
General Business, Councilmember Cole?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Wong?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
I want to thank the high school for their day of service. I saw many students out there with trash bags and they covered the whole city in kudos to them. So that helps our public works and they get something out of it. So thanks again for that. And the Mac Home here, the Veterans House, there hasn't been a family in there since Christmas. So I called them up and I said, what's up? And they're, you know, they decide on so many families or whatever, so there'll be somebody in there. But I was kind of wondering, I thought, I haven't seen any action. And our church wanted to do something special during Christmas time, and I said, there's nobody in there.
nobody in there, so I thought that was kind of odd.
There's someone in there now.
I don't know, is it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe so.
I haven't seen any action, but, okay, that's good then.
You shouldn't be peeking at people's windows.
I don't do that. If I see lights on, I know.
Because I heard there was a code enforcement, somebody.
Oh, okay.
From there was parking in front of one of the residents.
Okay.
It was from the house there.
That's all I have.
That's all I know. Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, just very brief, since it was brought up landscaping downtown for the project, I mean, I don't even remember the part of that getting pulled, but, I mean, we gotta put something together and get something going. We can't wait to plant stuff until the end of the year. I mean, and I don't see that as something that's breaking the bank unless it's because we're trying to route irrigation or something, again, and these costs that drive things up, that delay stuff, it just is becoming extremely frustrating for me and others, because I know I get asked about that all the time, about what's going on in downtown with the landscaping. So that would be nice to move that up the list and get something going. I don't think it needs to take council action unless it's over a dollar amount, but I don't know. So maybe we can move that up on the priority list. And then, you know, as, you know, we're getting overwhelmed here with numbers tonight and good presentations, but as we were, you know, hearing from Baker Tilly and in particular ways to increase our bond rating, I couldn't help but think, there's a quick and easy solution to that to improve our city finances, and that would be to sell the community center. I don't, I don't care who we sell it to, but if we were to sell that, that would improve our finances without a doubt, and we could use that money to help finance things like landscaping for downtown or put it towards a road project that's 20% over, or, you know, all sorts of different things. So I hope that we can have continued discussion on that idea, or at least continued discussion on the plan for that facility, because, you know, we had a workshop on that a month ago, and we need to keep going with that, so that's all I have.
And I got, we had the Air Force ROTC the other day did the town death march, did a, just in memorial of all the people that did that or went through that, but there's about 30 kids that actually did it, they walked 14 miles, and we had a good turnout there of people to cheer them on, so it was real nice of them to do that. And I hear the program is kind of in jeopardy because they only have so many people, so many kids in the program. So it's nice to be able to support them and try to promote that program over there, because I think it's very important for the school to have that program over there. Other than that, I think that's it, and if there's anything else?
So reminder that after the city council meeting, we have a HRE meeting.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure.
So motion to adjourn?
Allo.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and now we'll go into, unless you want to take a two-minute break, we can go into our HRE meeting.